I will listen. We'll call the order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and Kathy will use the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We need to remove action item G3 and 16. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move. Remove the agenda with items, action item three and 16 being removed and allow chair to DVA as necessary.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. I have seen call to the public. The first person I have is Dogg, Dan Dellings, Tubac.
Dan Dellings, Tubac, thank you for having me today. And this is just to thank the county for the work it did at the Chavez siding river crossing. It's been washing out really bad. I know your subcontractors were working on it yesterday. And a number of comments came across. Some folks did not like the idea that there was heavy equipment in the river, but it's no different than a truck or anything else that's working there. All they did was push dirt in from both sides of the river. So even though it's quite passable now, it's still quite, it's getting deep and it's getting wider because it's raining. And all those fines are going to wash out and you're going to start hearing from the neighbors again. But thank you for what you did do. It's working right now. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the board?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you Supervisor Moletta for giving me the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Bracker, Mr. Reese.
Morning.
Good morning. How are you? Good morning, everybody. I'm Jorge Maldonado, Mayor of the city of Nogales. And basically, my main interest is let's start working together. Let's start working together. Let's start getting together. You know, I've been in there a month and a half, and I think we're ready. We're ready to start delegating on, you know, parks, parks and recs, streets, everything. Open, you know, I think I've talked to all my directors. I've talked to all my council people, and I think we're ready to start moving. And I'm not wasting my time. There's no mañana. It's now. It's not doing it. And, you know, I've been very busy by national. Governor Sonora, you know, I was involved with the President on Friday, and we're trying to get things done. We've got a meeting with Hobbs on the seventh, actually, yeah, on the seventh of March up in Phoenix. We'll be in Washington from the 25th through the 29th. And I'm just not going to waste my time. Let's get, start talking. What can, we work together. Thank you for the collaboration on the CPR thing. I think it's a going, we're having a meeting on Wednesday, trying to finalize where we're going to host it and how and what. You know, there's minimal funding. You guys could help us. We put 2,500, just, you know, for the cards. I think the cards is the main funding. You know, we're trying to work, work it out where we could give the CPR cards to whoever takes the course. And surprisingly, Thursday, I was in Hermosillo at a, you know, conference, and I was at a restaurant, and I think I saved a little girl's life. She went into convulsions right next to me, and I supported her. Supported her, and that's all it takes. I had this Chalparra in front of me, and he was shocked that I reacted. But, you know, I love medicine. I wish I would have been a doctor, but just never got into produce and moved into plant, saving plants and doing, dealing with plants instead of humans. But I still love medicine, and I think it's something our whole community, county, city, needs to be aware. And one life is worth any penny we, we spend. Thank you. And, you know, any questions? Come on up.
Republic, we can't ask you a question.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you.
Just for clarification, because we can't clarify, right?
You can respond to criticism.
No, but you can also ask for a clarification.
You can ask for a clarification.
So you said meeting. Can you give us a name that we can reach out? That's the only thing I want.
Oh, myself. That's all you need. Anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. You got it, Mayor. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Is there anybody on line that'd like to address the board? Okay. And we'll move on to current events. For the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Moletta.
Mr. Chairman, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Busy week. Last week, we were at our annual conference in Washington. We kicked it off by having a super busy schedule on Thursday, where we met with nine of our congressional that day. They were leaving that afternoon, so we had to squeeze in meetings, and we, we probably put in at least 20,000 steps that day. But we had a, a great, great meetings, very productive meetings. And in, in the topics of discussion with, with our congressional were our transportation infrastructure funding, number one. Two, deconsign port of entry. Three, international outfall interceptor. Four, Forest Service road infrastructure improvements in the Patagonia area. And five, expedited approval for the Clomar for Nogales Wash. That's the FEMA we need for the downtown area. And it was just a great meeting with Representative Grijala, Stanton, Cisco Mane, Ruben Gallego, Senator Sinema, Senator Kelly's office, and Schreiker.
Cozart's office.
Cozart's office, and one more. The rookie was at Crane. Yeah. Yeah. So it was a great, great meetings. And then Tuesday, we, we also had meetings with Department of Agriculture, the Forest Department. Supervisor Bracker had to come back, but Supervisor Reese and myself handled those. Great, great meetings, very productive. Lastly, I want to thank the mayor for reaching out, reaching out. It's not the first time. We've had several conversations, and it's good to see a fresh, open mind, looking forward to combining resources and working together the way it should be. I personally thank you. And I thank you for fixing that, that water issue at Meadow Hills. I know we went back and forth, and you contacted the state, and they took care of it. Thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Reese.
Thank you. Want to echo my colleagues' comments. It was very productive. Some of the, I think to me, was great to talk to your representative, Cisco Mane. One of the things about him as a freshman, very unheard of. He's on the appropriations committee. So that's a benefit to us here in Southern Arizona, that we can try to get funds to flow this way. We also had coffee with our two senators. We did meet briefly with Senator Sinema in her office, but we, she did come and, and meet with the whole Arizona delegation. Just some great opportunities to meet the staff people that helped the electors do that. So we have some great contacts. I think all of us that went were very happy that we did that. We also had our technology director out there for meetings. He got invited along with Supervisor Moletta to a meeting with Sachi Torres, who is the, another sub-director of the agriculture, thanks to Liz Archuleta, our former, to talk about broadband. And I know on Tuesday that we were very busy. We weren't able to see the President's address to NACO. But I think talking with GSA was very important, figuring out when they're going to begin the feasibility study that was appropriated, and they said sometime in April. They're looking at about 280 days, which would probably maybe bring them into 2024. And the same thing with the Forest Service. So very productive. Jennifer, Jesus, Juan, Supervisor Moletta, and Bracker, myself. I think as Supervisor Moletta alluded to, is we probably put in over 20,000 steps. We left early in the morning and got back to the hotel late at night. So that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just a little bit of clarification on, on some of the points that Supervisor Moletta was talking about. The, the visit on the IOI, we're asked, that project is underway, as we know, with a little bit of disturbance that's happening downtown. What we're asking our federal delegation for is support on the drug screen. The federal government is asking for some redundancy in the system, so the price tag went up. And so we're asking for $6 million to do the drug screen for the IOI. With FEMA mapping, we've submitted, we submitted remapping three years ago for downtown to take it out of the floodway, put it in the floodplain. FEMA has a policy. They're supposed to be responding in 90 days. And so we were out there reminding our federal delegation that we needed them to put some pressure on FEMA so we could get this done. It has a huge impact on what's going to happen for revitalization downtown, but it also has a huge impact with what happens to the business owners downtown currently because they're paying for floodway map, floodway insurance instead of floodplain insurance. But other than that, it was a very good trip for State Supervisor, Supervisor Moletta and Supervisor Reese alluded to. We did meet with our entire federal delegation, and we stressed the things that we needed to happen here. Finally, on the meeting that we have with Department of Transportation, we were talking about the different avenues that we could raise the federal money for the Ruby Road grade separated crossing of Puro Creek and of the railroad. County right now is looking at doing a raised grant for that. And actually, Federal Highway, Federal Highway Administration suggested that, Department of Transportation suggested that we also investigate, do a couple other grants, and not just going at it with one grant. So that is a project that we're all working on.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interject. Can I add one, one other thing? I think we forgot is, we, we also mentioned the, the bill that Congressman Grijala and Senator Sinema ran for the city to change the language. We, we also mentioned that we're supporting that as well.
The transfer of ownership of the IOI.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. And that concludes my report. And Supervisor Moletta, Supervisor Reese, and Madam Manager.
Good morning. Again, I think you all have nicely summed up what we did last week, and I went on vacation after that. So I don't think I have anything else to report.
Okay. Report on the weather during your vacation. I will tell you that we had nicer weather in DC than you guys had here. Thank God. Okay. Item E, corporate reports and activities, financials, cash investments, expenditures, and revenue reports. Maricio, welcome back.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
The cash and investment report. The general fund has an overall balance of 19,783,187 with an investment amount of 14,510,000. The road fund has an overall balance of 1,0186 with an investment amount of 7,119. The flood control district has an overall balance of 1,127,214 with an investment amount of 269,773. The jail district has an overall balance of 3,967,381 with an investment amount of just a little bit over a million dollars. Total for all funds, overall balance of 46, 730,172 with an investment amount of 17,663,888 for an estimated end of the month balance of 15,635,570.
Any questions for Mr. Chow?
No, sir.
Thank you, Maricio. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item one in action items. Discussion possible action to approve a two-year deployment for the Santa Cruz local workforce development board for Scully Estab, Fernando Sandoval, Jesse Pontes, Guillermo Otan, and Greg Lucero.
Move to second. Move to approve.
I have a motion to second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you want to hold it?
No, because I don't know if they were.
We're good?
Okay.
And motion carries unanimously. Item two, discussion possible action to approve amendments. Number two to the Department of, Arizona Department of Health Services and intergovernmental agreements extending and ending dates for contract number CTR 057221 for COVID-19 ELC funding enhanced detection expansion project until July 31st, 2024. And B, contract number CTR 59269 for COVID-19 ELC funding for K-12 school reopening until July 31st, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four, discussion possible action to approve proclamation declaring February 27th, 2023 due March 3rd, 2023, as read across America, read on Santa Cruz County Week from the county school superintendent.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five, discussion possible action to approve mutual aid agreement, number IM-W91QUS-23-001-MMA with the United States Army Garrison, USAG, for which you could improve their ability to aid during incidents and/or emergencies from emergency services.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item six, discussion possible action to authorize parterre police of substitute insurance agreement, number 201704257, specific to lots 88 through 99 inclusive, Tubac Golf Resort Development Unit Number Two.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, discussion possible action to approve authorization for services. Number three with CDS Engineers, Inc., for erosion control project design and bidding services, ADOT grant agreement, number E3STF01D.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eight, discussion possible action to approve a professional service agreement, RFQ number 03-20-C003 with David E. Sandback Architect, Inc., for the 1904 courthouse renovation and dome roof repair.
Move to approve.
Second, and then the...
And a second under discussion.
Thank you, Mary. Again.
This is our... CDBG grant.
The CDBG grant as well as the Heritage Fund grant for the dome repair.
Thank you very much. So if Mary, nobody can, not everybody can hear Mary. The courtroom is a CDBG grant. The dome grant is a Heritage Fund grant. Thank you very much, Mary. Any other questions?
No, but I'm glad that we're getting closer to restoring that old courtroom, and now that the school superintendent has moved in there. I mean, it'll bring life to the, to the building, and that's kind of what we want. So thank you, Mary, for, for doing that. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Item nine, discussion possible action to approve service agreement contract, number USC 000005740 with Motorola Solutions, Inc., for the maintenance contractor sheriff's office radio system in the amount of 149,997.96.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just to say that I know that there have been several concerns raised at our board meetings about the sheriff's operation of those communication with his officers. As we've told them, we were waiting. I'm glad we finally got, I'm glad we finally got a quote so that we can have those. And Juan is here too, right?
It's, it's different. This is, we'll let Juan.
So a motion, a second, under discussion. Juan?
So this isn't going to change the system. It's going to continue to just maintain it so that it's work. Okay. So then I got it wrong. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Supervisors, yeah. This is our annual maintenance agreement. So we do have, we pay for maintenance, so when something happens, they come down and fix it, right? So this is separate than what we are looking at to replace.
Well, you know, it's, I will say this is, it's okay to maintain the system, but we need to upgrade the system. And if we're putting in $150,000 a year to maintain a system that needs to be replaced, then we need to find something to, to get it done. Because I know that our community has expressed concern a few times about that. And I know that you've put it out, and you haven't gotten a quote from them yet. But, you know, I think if we're going to continue to have this, that we have at least an upgraded system so that, that our, our community and our deputies feel safe. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, discussion possible action to approve amendment to SOA carrier service agreement with CenturyLink for broadband services governed by the Arizona, by the state of Arizona Master Agreement Contract, number CTR 049872 for an annual amount of $20,100.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, under discussion. Juan? Come back up. Good thing you didn't go all the way to the back.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. Yeah, this is, we had originally come to you guys mid-last year with, with an agreement with, with CenturyLink for this Anoda building. They kind of came back with, with some concerns of, they, they kind of underbid it. So we renegotiated with, with Bill's help. We, we were able to come to a solution. So that's why we're coming back to you for, for, for the new agreement.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, we're going to discuss in our executive session and come back and bring it to the, to the vote. Item 12, discussion possible action to approve intergovernmental agreement with Arizona State Board of Equalization for Hearing Officer Service for a period of one year.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? This is the, this is, when people have issues with their assessments, instead of bringing it to the Board of Supervisors, we have this officer come down and he, somebody who's a trained professional to hear these, these cases. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 13, discussion possible action to approve bonds for people to warrant KMP.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 14, discussion possible action, recommendation for approval for special event license applications. A, Boys and Girls Club of Santa Cruz County, Inc., scheduled for May 5th, 2023, in Rio Rico. And B, Wisdom Sports and Scholars, scheduled for July 3rd, 2023, in Tubac.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion carries unanimously. Item 15, discussion possible action, recommendation of approval for application of liquor license for El Mercado in Tubac.
Madam Clerk, everything in order?
Chairman Bracker and Supervisor Mani, yes, everything is in order.
Great, thank you. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 17, tax valuation adjustment, 112-44-530.
Move to approve.
Second.
I think I need to finish reading the thing. America Loyosa Resolution Number 56576.
Oh, sorry. Move to approve.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 18, monthly reports.
Chairman Bracker, members of the board, all reports are in. Thank you.
Very much.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 19, approval of minutes for 27, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 20, demands. Supervisor Moletta.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve demands totaling $584,754.99, of which $292,036.11 are from the general fund.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Maricio, you have to pay the bills. Okay, we're going to go into our executive
session for item 11, and what else have we talked about?
The other executive session that's already agendaed.
Pardon?
The other executive session under F1. Those are all.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will move that we recess our regular session and convene into executive session one pursuant to ARS 384310383 and 4, discussion and consultation for legal advice and/or direction regarding contracting and hiring process and protocols, and to get legal direction on item 11 that relates to the special district settlement participation for the pharmacies outlined in the agenda.
Second.
Does that cover it?
Yes, sir.
Do I need to read executive session one, or is that...
Yes.
Okay. I'll, motion a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and we are in executive session.
I'll ask everyone to leave. Mr. Chairman, I will move that we adjourn our executive session, convene to regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11 on the action items, discussion possible actions to approve subdivision and special district settlement participation for the Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart proposed national opioid settlements.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman, I will move that we recess our regular session and convene into the study session, and apologize to the group for being 25 minutes late.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are in study session.
Have fun, guys.
See you later, you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, study session. Presentation by Yvette Ramirez, CCAP Executive Director on Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Programs and Changes made of October 2022.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Yvette Ramirez. I am the Executive Director of Southeastern Arizona Community Action Program. Cecilia Brown, which is our regional coordinator, is passing out some packets. I don't know if you guys were provided with these packets. This is information on the program that I'm here to talk about. We are here to ask the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors for your support, not financial support, but support with your voices and support with your pens. For the past 40 years, CCAP has always provided the utility assistance in our four counties, which is the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program. Well, in March of last year, we were notified by the Department of Economic Security that, in their infinite wisdom, they decided that they were going to take over the utility program. Starting October 1st, that's exactly what happened. So now everybody has to apply through a portal, and it has caused some huge issues for your residents, especially the elderly. They are unable to apply on their own. They, they can still come to CCAP, but we do not make determination anymore for how much they qualify for, or if they even qualify. And that causes a huge problem because most of the families that come to apply with us are already at a point of disconnection. And now... And now with the way they apply through the portal, it can take up to sometimes three weeks, up to two months, before the utility company actually receives the funding. And we've had some instances where we had an elderly lady in another county where she actually was without utilities, was very, very sick. She emailed us, she called us crying, and she ended up having a heart attack that night. So CCAP staff pulled together, and we got the money to pay her gas, the gas, so that they could turn her gas back on. We have a situation here in Santa Cruz County where a gentleman came in to apply in October. He was approved for assistance, and they were going to, they gave him $900 towards his propane bill and $300 towards his electric bill. Well, with propane now, the money has to go to the bank account of the person that's applying. This gentleman received the $900, but he never received the $300 towards his electric bill. So he took the $900, went and paid his electric bill, because it was at a point of a disconnection, and used the remainder for his propane. That was in October. He was here last week saying he needed more propane, because he had run out. We were not able to help him. And the reason we couldn't help him is because the state's guidance is if he received $900 to pay his propane, we need to see the invoice or the receipt showing that he put $900 towards his propane. We checked with the state. They still haven't paid the $300 to the electric company, because they paid the wrong electric company. They paid Arizona Public Service instead of Unisource Energy Services. They're waiting for Arizona Public Service to pay them back before they can give this gentleman his $300. So there's lots of other situations that we're coming across, especially now that it's been six months. Your residents are paying the price, and we don't like it. We're very concerned for them. And are we going in the direction of portals and technology? Absolutely. And we know we're going in that direction. Our issue is the way the state implemented this program was incorrect. They moved it too quickly, especially when it pertains to seniors. You know, a senior cannot go onto a computer, apply through the portal. And we provided you the application there. We provided you with what they have to go through, and then to upload all the documentation in order for them to get assisted. So right now, we're in the process of hopefully meeting with the new DES director to voice our concerns about this program. Do we expect that DES is going to say, no, you guys can go ahead and have the program back? No. But at least to say, you know what, there are problems with the portal. And yes, we need to take time to actually roll this out the way it should have been rolled out for the benefit of those who don't have internet, who don't have computers, who can't apply on their own. So our request for you guys is, like I said, we need your voice to help us reach legislatures, reach the governor's office, to do something about correcting this program.
Was this changing law, or was this changing how the program was done?
It was just, what they did was with the eWRAP funds, the eviction rental assistance programs that were received through COVID, they built this portal. While those funds ended, and they put millions of dollars into this portal, what are they going to do with the portal? So they decided to take the next biggest program, which was the utility program. But the portal was not made for the utility program, and that's where all the issues are. And.
What did eWRAP stand for?
Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And they tried to fit something.
It's very different than utility payments.
Yes, sir, it is. And that's what they did. They tried to fit a circle into a box, and it didn't work. And it's causing lots of issues for the residents.
So have you talked to anybody from Unisource?
And that's another issue, yes, sir. They want us to give them vouchers, like we always have, guaranteeing the payments. We can't do that anymore, and the state refuses to give them guarantees. They're saying, we're going to approve them, and then when we get to getting to pay them, we will pay them. And that's where the issue is. Families need the help today, not two months down the road.
Can we direct staff to write a letter to the governor's office?
Yeah, why we'll see why not.
Staff?
And our state legislators.
Well, we need to do, we need to.
It's at a department level. This is a department, this is a department head decision. So if we write, you can tell the legislators, but really the office of the governor and the Southern Arizona District, the Southern Arizona Director should be notified. Because we want to CC our delegation, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, because if it was done by the director that's no longer there, then it's certainly in their, we'll have to be able to change it back to the way it was.
Right.
And be able to do that. And I know this year was cold.
Yes, it was.
And then, of course, the 12-hour outing we had didn't help things a lot either, especially with people on ventilators or whatever. Yeah, we can do that, and we can reach out to, we can support you with those letters.
Thank you.
If you have any contacts, just make sure that they're brought up here, and we'll make phone calls on your behalf. Because I understand the needs of the elderly, so.
Yes.
You guys have always been good over at the United Church Villas.
Yes. Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
And we're sorry it took so long.
Oh, no, no. It's worth the wait if it's going to help, especially our elderly.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The letter needs, the letter needs to. The letter needs to say that we want them to restore this is the program to where it was with our local assistance organizations providing the resources for our constituents that are in.
I was pretty much going to ask.
Okay, we can get together.
Drop the letter for us, because they would know more exactly what they want, and then we can.
Do you have something in writing already?
We do have talking points. We have gone to all the other board of supervisors, and they've asked us for talking points, and we do have that, that we can provide.
Right, that would be great, because you know all the nuances, but because we don't run that program, we might miss something. So, yes, we would do that, and then I'll put it into our format. I'll individually send it to the three, we can proof it. We'll have legal look at it just to make sure, and then we can get it out for sure.
As you know, we go through legal a lot.
Yes.
I'd like to thank you for your service to our community and to the region. You have a very, very typical job to sit there and analyze each one of these cases, because each case is probably heartbreaking. And so just thank you very much for what you, you and your team do for our constituents in our community.
Thank you.
Jared, did you want anything else that you wanted to? Oh, no.
We will, and we'll share everything that we sent, so you have a copy of it as well. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn our study session, reconvene regular session.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I forgot what I was just supposed to do.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
How about, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.